Good morning, everybody. And welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, July 31st, year 2001. It is about 10:15 a.m. Council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10 a.m. We're as close to it as we can get 10 bodies in here. Clerk, please call the roll.
Burton, Galanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Miskowski, Fachek, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Stein, Padilla. Ten members present in a court, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Burton moves. Ms. Galanter seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves and Mr. Reyes seconds.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's an item being continued. City Attorney has requested that item number five be continued one week until August 7th.
Members, request by the city attorney to continue item number five without objection, we will continue that item.
Mr. President, item number four is the opening and awarding of bids. The bids were opened this morning in the city administrative office and the CAO has prepared a resolution for council to adopt, awarding the bid to Solomon Smith Barney an aggregate principal amount of $201,290,000 with a true interest cost of 4.50076%. A motion is required from the floor.
Items one, item number four, public hearing has been held on that item. Any members wishing to speak on item number four? As Kirk has just now explained, we do need a motion. Members, Mr. Wax moves. Mr. Weiss seconds. Any members wishing to speak? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved.
Mr. President, items number one through three are items for which public hearing has been held.
Colleagues, items one through three are before us. Public hearing has been held on these items. Any members wishing to speak? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Items one through three. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved, excuse me.
Item number one is the ordinance and will be held over for a second reading on August 7th.
Next item, please.
Items numbers six through 15 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
We have cards on items number six, seven, eight. We'll call those items special. Any members of the public wishing to speak on items six through 15, please submit your cards now. We do have, item five was continued. Colleagues, any specials?
Eleven B. I have a substitute motion for eleven B.
Check calls, eleven B special. Ms. Galanter? Thirteen, called special by Ms. Galanter. Any other specials? Clerk, please call the roll, open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item.
That brings you back to the items called special. Item number six called special and as much as a member of the public who wishes to speak. Item number six is now before us. The council calls forward Mr. Larry Green.
Good morning. I'll be a little brief. If I seem like I'm hobbling, I, as you know, I fell on the sidewalks and I have a knee brace on along with fellow great athletes, Joe Namath and Mickey Mantle, also ex-New Yorkers. I'm wearing a knee brace and I want to thank the folks at Kaiser at midnight last night who gave me this knee brace, so I have no pain in my knee right now. But item number six is relative to declaring Burnside Manor a historic monument and I must add that this is a very important thing to declare historic monuments and it's in the beautiful district where I reside and I applaud the council for doing this. I'm going to sit over here because I'm talking on seven also, if that's okay, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment on item number six. Any members wishing to speak on item number six? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item six is approved. Next item, please.
Item number seven called special for a member to speak.
Again, the council calls forward Mr. Larry Green.
Yes, I'm back. I am Larry Green. Item number seven, I'll be very brief because I know you want, got these, I like the way you're running this ship, by the way, Mr. President. You are really a credit to MIT and to the business of politics. You're wonderful.
There's 14 of us up here. It's a team effort.
I know, but I'm on time. What are you going to do when you're 30, if you're president at age 28? So I want to know. But I'll keep my eye on you. I know you're a great guy. Item number seven is same as item six but for another item. It's declaring the Hewitt residence on 1543 North Curzon, which coincidentally is also in the fourth district, as a historical item, monument. And it's very important that all of you visit the fourth district. We have more than just, than just coffee shops. We have a lot of beautiful old buildings there and everybody's welcome there. So I support item number seven. I'll be very brief. I'm done. That's it.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment on item number seven. Any members wishing to speak? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item number seven is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number eight. A member of the public wishes to speak. We have several cards on item number eight. The council calls forward Frank McGinnity to be followed by Rita Tuzan.
Yes, my name is Frank McGinnity. I'm the trustee of the St. John Trust that owns Chateau Colleen. And I'm here today to oppose the designation of Chateau Colleen as a historical monument for a number of reasons. One is, I think, the lot next door, for example, which is a vacant lot, will eventually be developed into six stories and that's going to sort of box me in on both sides of these tall buildings, decreasing the amount of light and air going into the building. Second, the property needs substantial repair, probably $400,000 to be put into it. Third, I find myself in a box because I have rent control on one side and on the other I have this designation, so that's the reason I would oppose the designation today. I would ask that the council maybe defer this for 30 days and the reason for that is the property has been in escrow. It appears it will fall out of escrow because of this designation and I'd like to have some time to be able to now evaluate what my position could be going forward. I have not signed anything, but I find that I'm being designated, but I haven't signed. I've also talked to the Cultural Historical Commission for information, which I haven't been able to get, and I need that as well, so that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rita Tuzan to be followed by Jason St. John's.
Good morning, council members. My name is Rita Tuzan and I am the applicant on this, on this property. I'm an adjacent homeowner to the Chateau Colleen and moved to the area in 1997. At the time I moved there, if you're not familiar with the Chateau, it is an absolutely beautiful building done in the Chateau Estelle, built in 1935, that is really something that everyone who goes through the area notices. At the time we moved there, we were thrilled that it would be our neighboring property and we believed that it was landmarked at that time. We were told that. I think most people believe that it was and that it would be protected. And we were quite surprised to learn a couple of months ago that it hadn't been. We, we learned this because we learned that a demolition permit had been applied for and that the property owner's management, who you just heard from, was planning on trying to demolish the building and sell it in tandem to the property we understand next door so that a high-rise could be built. A lot of the neighbors and a lot of the people in the area joined together to really try to save this incredibly beautiful building that is in really terrific condition. It's one of the last remaining multiple-family residences in, on the Wilshire corridor in that area and it is just beautiful. We, we were really shocked that it would be torn down and so we brought the application. You know, obviously, you know, everyone in the area is concerned. The homeowners association, which is the Homeby Westwood homeowners association, has supported this, as has the Westwood Historical Society. Many architects, including the AIA local chapter, Professor Thomas Hines, who's a noted architect at UCLA, Roberta Deering of the California Preservation Society. And last but not least, we have gotten and submitted, hopefully it's in your packet, a report from someone who is neutral. It's an architectural preservationist who did a report in the past, not commissioned by us, but we were able to obtain it, on this property and whether it would, it would qualify under the city statute. It undoubtedly does, she concluded, as well as under the state and national register, which we intend to apply for. So there is no question that this property qualifies under the statute. There's no question that it is the last of its type. There's no question that the architect who built the property is someone of note. Other properties he has built have been designated as cultural landmarks before by the city in the area. He built the Fox Theater and he designed the Fox Theater in Westwood, among other noted buildings in the area. And I just wanted to address for a moment the comments of Mr. McGinnity, who is the attorney for the trust that is handling the property. My understanding is that the person who bought this property and who still owns the property is someone who was a developer and who loved the property and he bought it because he wanted to save it and he owned it and thought that'd be enough. And unfortunately, he's older and he has health problems and he is not in control of his property anymore and I, I think no one, including Mr. McGinnity, would argue with the idea that that was not his vision. It is the vision of others to try to preserve this building and there are others who are willing to step up to the plight, purchase the building if they're, if they want to sell it, which they apparently do.
I'll ask you to conclude, please.
And save it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jason St. John's to be followed by Videla Aronoff.
Jason Sinjan, I am a resident of Chateau Colleen, Homeby Hills. I think I can safely speak on behalf of the eight residents, actually now seven residents of the property. I am sure that I would just like to address council on the financial aspects of Chateau Colleen. About a year ago, the current ownership of the property did apply for luxury exemption on, on the rent control on the property. It was, I think at that time deemed that the one, the one way to, for the luxury exemption to be granted was for a certain amount of money, capital to be invested in the property, which the current owners decided not to do. So I really think that Mr. McGinnity's presentation on the, you know, that, that financial aspect of the property is invalid. I, I'm sure I'm just one of a number of people who would like, young people who would like to be proactive in securing financiers and we've already commenced discussions to purchase the property, operated at a profit, operated at a profit that would actually see a return to city, city council, so there's no loss for city funds of preserving the building versus having a six-story or 10-story condo building constructed on the property. Once again, the California Preservation Foundation in Oakland has deemed this an historic kind of property. They're very concerned about it. The American Institute of Architects, the Los Angeles Bureau, had a bold meeting deciding that this that this is architecture which definitely needs to be preserved. It's a chateausque, old Hollywood-style building where it is rumored that Betty Davis and Clark Gable found their homes at this building. It's an historic Los Angeles building. The Los Angeles Conservancy, who of course the Los Angeles experts on this are fully supportive, as are the Hombe Westwood Historical Society and the Westwood Homeowners Association. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Vidala Aronoff to be followed by Ken Bernstein.
My name is Vidala Aronoff. And when I moved to Los Angeles, I absolutely fell in love with Chateau Colleen. I had to live there. And luckily, I was able to move in. It's an absolutely beautiful building that we must save. And it is true that Mr. McGinnity has some concerns financially about the building. However, when I found out about it being demolished, I found some people who were interested in buying the building. So he can sell the building and these people are interested in buying it and conserving it and fixing it up. Their interest is not in making a profit with the building. They also own some other landmark buildings in Los Angeles and their concern is to preserve the beauty of these buildings. So it's not a financial hardship for the St. John family to sell it, maybe not as much as they could sell it if they were going to demolish it, but they still could make a profit. Also, there was a concern about the vacant lot next door. I've spoken with John Aldridge, Director of Parks and Public Works, and he said there's a possibility the vacant lot could be turned into a park, which, as you know, LA needs more parks. So a lot of these problems can, they have other solutions aside from tearing down a beautiful building like Chateau Colleen. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ken Bernstein.
Good morning, council members. Ken Bernstein with the Los Angeles Conservancy. We're here today in support of the nomination for Chateau Colleen. The chateau is a truly unique and distinctive multifamily building. It has ornate architectural details, both in its exterior and its distinctive interiors. I wish you could all have a chance to tour the chateau. It is not a dilapidated building. It is an exceptional living space that is still a vibrant community today. I did want to address, although much has been said already, I wanted to address the comment made by the representative of the property owner. A continuance on this item would actually kill the nomination. We are up against the sixty-day time limit under which the council needs to act on the nomination. And if there is a continuance, the nomination would die. And the reason that would be disastrous in this particular case is because there actually is a demolition permit pending on this property that had been applied for prior to the nomination. So if the council does not act on the nomination, the demolition permit could be approved by building and safety and the building could be demolished. I also wanted to conclude by pointing out that the report that was submitted to the Cultural Heritage Commission by the applicants here and by the architectural historian Theresa Grimes was one that was commissioned not by anyone involved with the case currently, but by an earlier developer that had hoped to purchase Chateau Colleen, demolish it, and build on the vacant lot and on this lot. And her findings were bad news for that developer. She found it was not only eligible for listing here by you as a historic cultural monument, but also for the National Register of Historic Places. And armed with that information, the previous developer dropped out of that project, leaving it in its current situation. So we strongly urge designation today by this council as a way of buying time for all of us to facilitate a preservation solution and find a buyer who will reinvest in this remarkable piece of Westwood and Hombe Hills history.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public hearing on this item. The chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, I rise in support of this measure. The Chateau Colleen, the building we're talking about, is in my district. And colleagues, it is truly an extraordinary building. You know, if you're traveling at the typical rate of speed down Wilshire Boulevard, you're probably not going to notice it. And I got to confess that I hadn't noticed it for a long time because it's sort of an orphan. It's tucked in amongst all the skyscrapers, all the large condominium buildings. There's this beautiful treasure of a building. And, you know, sometimes we will have debates here in council about issues which are proposed for historic designation. And you kind of wonder, you look at them sideways, you say, is this really architecturally significant? Is it really historic? And there's some back and forth. With respect to this property, there is just no debate. It's an absolute gem. When you see it, it really evokes a part of Los Angeles that we just don't have that much of anymore. It truly is a historical treasure. It's an architectural treasure. I have to tell you that the residents and the neighbors, whose efforts in this matter were led by Ms. Tuzan, have just been extraordinary. They've been very diligent and very conscientious in their approach to this matter. And then when the LA Conservancy came in, led by Ken Bernstein, the Conservancy's efforts were also extraordinary and commendable. So I would ask that my colleagues join me in supporting this measure. Mr. Bernstein is right. The clock is ticking because a demolition permit was pulled on this really without, and it took us unawares. So it's important that we support this and that we preserve this last remaining vestige of this particular type of architecture in LA history.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number one was an ordinance that had been passed. Do you wish to reconsider that to get a unanimous vote? Before we do that, Mr. Garcetti, did you wish to speak on the previous item?
No, I have a motion to reconsider. Something for, just to call two things special. My squawk box was not working, so I thought, we're not in session, I wanted to call two things special that weren't on the roll.
Okay, which items?
Number twelve and fourteen, please.
Colleagues request to reconsider items twelve and fourteen by Councilmember Garcetti. Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those items are reconsidered. Let's, Mr. Clerk, go back to item number one. Members request for reconsideration, item number one, for purposes of getting twelve votes on a first reading of an ordinance. Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item number one has been reconsidered and is now before us. Let's take a vote once again on item number one. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item number one is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number eleven B called special by Councilmember Pacheco for a substitute motion that has been distributed. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, this is simply a clarification for a special event. Ask to, excuse me, I will be moving approval of the substitute motion, eleven B.
Substitute motion has been introduced and circulated. Any other members wishing to speak? Without objection, we'll accept the substitute. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number thirteen called special by Councilmember Galanter.
We do have one speaker card on item thirteen before we have members speak. Council calls forward Jim McQuiston. Item thirteen.
Good morning, Jim McQuiston. I'm the planning representative from the East Hollywood Community Association, and we want to voice our support to the reorganization of the city council committees. We think it's a very good plan. And we just hope that our city councilman in the thirteenth district will get on the plum committee.
Thank you very much. This concludes public hearing on item number thirteen. The chair recognizes Ms. Galanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really asked to speak mainly to compliment you on bringing this in and bringing it in so quickly. There is really nothing so gratifying as discovering that somebody was listening. And so I'm thrilled to find that you did, in fact, hear some of the suggestions that I had made in my campaign speech and also in our private discussions. I think it's very important that we have a separate committee that deals with the new neighborhood councils and the whole issue of public participation. And although I might have done the combinations a slightly different way, I think that this is a great step forward and I'm delighted to support it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to stand today and congratulate you for your creative thinking on this reorganization of our committees. Those of us who worked on the charter commission heard over and over again that the people who feel most disconnected from this government really want something more than business as usual. And I think the fact clearly that you have decided to have a committee that deals with neighborhood councils and with our whole education and schools is a really forward-thinking thing. And I believe that's what the city is looking for us to do, is to really change the way we look at these committees. I would like to, I don't know if this is the right time to offer the friendly amendment, but I would like to see that committee that you've initially entitled as schools and neighborhoods. I would like to see us name that education and neighborhoods. Because I believe the issues are more than just schools, where I believe we can really step up to the plate and help the children in Los Angeles. I think it's going to be dealing with after schools. I think it's going to be dealing with joint use agreements to help the whole educational experience of our kids from eight in the morning till six in the afternoon. I believe we're going to be going after funding to help our schools, school to career. There's just a lot of issues that I think would be better described in our committee that starts, that says education and neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wax.
Mr. President, members of council, of course, I too applaud the forming of a separate committee for the neighborhood councils and education for the reasons that were well-stated. But I have to remind my colleagues that in the last analysis, it's going to take more than a committee. It's going to take resources to organize and enable the neighborhood councils to organize and effectively communicate with people in the community and the government on an ongoing basis. And it's going to take a willingness of this council to empower them, particularly through an early notification ordinance, which will give them the opportunity to meaningfully weigh in on issues before they're decided and not have them decide it and close backroom doors as so often has been in the past. If we do those two things, if we give them the resources and we empower them, then this committee will be a critical vehicle to make the dream of neighborhood councils a reality. If we don't, then it will just be lip service and we'll have even more alienation and more dissatisfaction. So this is a great start, but in the last analysis, it's going to be up to this council to carry it through in a meaningful way.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I wanted to simply recognize that the committee structure is an improvement in some areas and I do support it. I ever feel compelled to respond to an editorial in the LA Times, July twenty-ninth, two thousand and one, titled "Fresh Breeze in City Hall." It indicates that some council members had expressed concern that the old Housing and Community Redevelopment Committee had neglected housing and got bogged down in redevelopment, specifically the controversial Community Redevelopment Agency, that the new committee would shift the emphasis to meeting Los Angeles' dire housing needs for affordable housing, new housing, and the inspection and maintenance of existing housing. I just want to go on record as indicating that that is what I believe to be a gross, inadequate statement about the work of the committee. If you review our work in the last two years while I've been chairing the committee, we established something that has never been done here in the city of Los Angeles, which was an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to really put a focus on affordable housing. We worked and established a housing crisis task force. We had a report established with the stakeholders in the community as well as the business industry and developers. We streamlined and provided new, up-to-date ordinances for the REAP program. We updated and conformed with the ALICE Act for senior citizens who are facing eviction because of housing issues. We increased the number of inspectors for our maintenance program. And the department has vigorously been monitoring and basically maintaining our rent control ordinance. And we also have vigorously pursued the systematic code enforcement program, although, and we were finally vindicated by the Supreme Court that that program was one which we could charge a fee for. I would simply ask that the new council members not take this as a way of doing business. If you have a concern with the committee and its workload, please address it to the chair during the regular process. I don't know who these council members are that felt compelled to make negative statements about the workload of the committee, but I can share with all of the new council members that every motion that you introduce that's assigned to any committee, I chair, will get all the respect and the process that it deserves as being part of this body. So I just wanted to state that for the record, that this is not the way we should be conducting business, that we should be working with our chairs and not simply making negative comments to the press.
Mr. Reyes.
I rise, council members, I rise in support of Councilmember Hahn's friendly amendment. I think the notion of education is one in which we should be more comprehensive in how we deal with our issues of sharing our knowledge, our experiences. We look at the different communities, training for people in their thirties and forties, retraining for technologies, understanding that English as a second language is a viable tool that we need to bring in our community. So the education concept ranges throughout the different age groups. So a spectrum of services can be viewed in a more comprehensive fashion. But I also recall during the campaign, I would have to spend three to five minutes explaining to the community folks that the city does not control the school district. It is a state entity and that we are going to try our best to coordinate, to leverage opportunities using our playgrounds, our facilities, our wrecked parks with the schools. So again, it bronsed the scope. Let's be inclusive as to the different age groups and acknowledge the fact that the city of LA is an international city, which means our ability to educate and promote the different kinds of culture elements that crosses the globe. It'll give us that opportunity. So I believe it's a good step in terms of identifying that comprehensive approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. In reviewing the list of proposals, I had two friendly suggestions, the first one of which is about housing and the pairing of housing with community development. I had a suggestion that community development might be better served by being grouped with economic development and employment since they're interrelated and economic development always involves community. And with every component of what we do should involve employment, new jobs and new employment for the people we represent. So I wanted to put that suggestion out for your consideration.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, just two of the categories here. One, dealing with neighborhoods, schools. I just got to tell you that we have no jurisdiction over some of these matters, citing of schools, et cetera, childcare issues, daycare programs. I mean, the council just don't get involved, except for the fact as it relates to the condition of use permit to permit. Under certain circumstances, they have those kinds of businesses in certain neighborhoods. It's been a land use matter and that's the way it has been handled appropriately. Neighborhoods, it sounds good when you're going to empower neighborhoods. The charter provided for neighborhood councils. But in reality, what comes from those councils is nothing more than a recommendation and they are not empowered. And to use that kind of nomenclature, I guess, naming what the committee is going to be doing, is going to be doing, is going to be misleading in the long run because the neighborhoods are going to come here and they say, okay, this is what we want, this is what we ask for, and this is what you're going to have to do. And then you're going to find yourself in conflict with what one neighborhood wants when you have a uniform policy as compared to what the other neighborhoods want. They may want housing, others may say, not in my backyard. They may want a certain kind of transportation, not in my backyard. So what you're going to do is set yourself up to be hit over and over again, which is going — something that you're going to have to deal with, but that's inevitable. When you look at rules, elections, and intergovernmental relations, I think that, best of my knowledge and information, that we've had an IGR for as long as there's been a city council for, as I know. I mean, Tom Bradley was chair of it, and before Tom Bradley was someone else, and Bob Farrell and so on. And you always had someone dealing with the other kinds of local governments, whether it be the League of Cities, National League of Cities, or Sacramento or Washington. You had somebody who understood the process and focused attention on what was needed in order to best represent us legislatively in those respective bodies. I think that with the new setup, there's a lot of responsibility. It's a lot to do, requires a lot of knowledge and a lot of background information. We just learned that with transportation over at MTA, if you don't have the background information or the association or the contacts, we are not usually as successful as we might be. So obviously, I don't know how this all happened. My question to Mr. President, whomever else who put this proposal together, it's important to know what the rationale was and why it's done this way and how we'd be better served as a city for it having been done, proposed to it this way. I think maybe the president can answer, or Mr. Deaton or someone, because I think that's something that we perhaps need to know. But as we move forward with whatever we do, consolidate or otherwise, be mindful of the fact that each member excluding this one will take the prerogative to talk to members of the legislature, to say, here's what's good for the city, I want your vote, whether it be in Sacramento, whether it be in Washington, whether it be the County Board of Supervisors or wherever, especially as it affects my district. We know for a fact, Mr. President, that the local government committees in the Senate and the Assembly deal specifically with these homes, childcare centers, and these other type homes that they — recovery homes and so on, in neighborhoods. The law fixed this certain number. We have no jurisdiction over there. They tell you how many is going to live there and on what circumstances can we repeal the conditions for which they're using that property when they violate our local conditions. At least they gave us that prerogative. But we can discuss this later as it, you know, comes up in committee. But I can tell you that it's going to affect each and every one of the districts that we represent. And I thank you for giving me overtime to discuss it. So if you want to respond to the questions that I raised, fine.
Thank you, and I will, actually. Some very good questions, and I believe, you know, once you hear my responses, I hope you will agree at that point. But I will speak last. I'm going to let everybody else speak first. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. I think there's nothing wrong with trying some new things. The city is changing, times are changing, we have a new council. It's a good idea to try some of these things. Some of the things we don't have direct control over, Nate, like the schools, but we certainly can use our best efforts to see that schools are created, both public and private, childcare in neighborhoods and so forth. The only suggestion, and it's a friendly suggestion, that I neglected to discuss with the president at one time, was that it might be better served to have the Planning and Land Use Management Committee and Building and Safety combined. I don't know if you're — are you listening to this? Alex, did you hear what I said?
I'm sorry, say it again.
I'm sorry. I didn't want to embarrass you, but the suggestion that I think you might want to consider for future, it doesn't have to be done today, but any of these things can be adjusted as you wish. Being as building and safety is such an integral part, the permit process of the land use process, I think it would be wise to combine the building and safety portion with PLUM. I know you've got it all lumped under public safety, but public safety really basically is police, fire, and paramedics. And I think that it would be better served if it could be done together in one committee with building and safety and PLUM. And you might consider that in our land use process, approval process. And I intend to support the measure, and I think it's going to give us some new perspective and some new things to look at.
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Burnson, I think under the reorganization, building and safety predominantly, at least those parts of One Stop and everything else are now recommended to be in planning. So your suggestion, I think, is something that was incorporated, including hall routes, including things like that, that are now in public safety and are better in planning. So I think that was well taken. I do concur that the — first of all, I too believe that this is a good restructure and it's healthy to do it. I think this is about the third or fourth committee renaming restructuring that I've seen since I've been at City Hall. But I particularly think that the neighborhoods and schools and/or neighborhoods and education is a good committee. And despite the fact that we don't — we are not the Board of Education, and I don't think we will ever claim to be, there are a lot of things that we should be doing more collaboratively and cooperatively with the Board of Education and our schools. For instance, I was just sharing with Ms. Hahn earlier that we were doing a joint project with a school in my district, and we wanted to use Quimby money. And this was to take an old asphalt playing area and convert it into grass using city money, Board of Education money, community-raised money. And the value that the city — that the community was going to get, or the city, was that this grassy playing field was going to be open on weekends to the general public. It was going to be completely controlled by the school during school days, school hours, and then available with a track, et cetera. But we were told we couldn't use Quimby money for that because we didn't own the property. We were able to find a way through this to get some modification to those issues, but those are the kind of projects and programs that we should be doing, we should be doing in making these schools our community centers, putting joint money projects together and supporting the schools as community centers in our district. And I think that that focus, particularly in the neighborhood committee, makes a lot of sense. And I too believe that the name change to education makes sense, not saying that we're going to get involved in educational policies, but it just gives a broader scope of what we want to have happen at these school sites as part of community centers associated with neighborhood. I think that they are going to be fine areas, fine locations for our neighborhood councils to meet. They are in every community, and I think that collaboration and association is something that we should affirm rather than deny.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. For everybody who's here from the public, for those who are watching on television, this is a pretty important day as council days go, in which we are looking at restructuring the way that we do business. And as such, I think this represents a monumental step forward, and I'd like to praise the process in which this went forward. I think that most members' opinions were brought in. There are suggestions, there are no ways to please everybody. Councilmember Perry brings up a very good point, and I would like to say that probably warrants further study, though at this point, the consolidation of the community development part of economic development and employment is probably somewhat premature. But this is going to be a fluid process. And if we are good public policymakers, this is something that we should and can revisit, not with territoriality in mind, not with thinking what is being taken away from my committee, which of course is always going to be part of politics, which of course is a part of the give and take here. But thinking about the public who we serve, what categories of policy go together naturally. I praise the fact that we have education and schools first and foremost here as the new committee. I praise that after years and years, decades of talking about consolidating economic development in this city, that we are actually moving forward to do that, and that we're adding the important word employment so that we think about workers, that we think about the people on the line and creating jobs, not just economic development in the macro sense, but also in the micro sense of door by door, person to person, house to house, how the economy impacts people. I think there are all kinds of other things that we can revisit at different times and suggestions that I've heard, to streamlining development, to maybe looking at how DWP could be part of an environmental quality and management, a waste management committee, so that we have environmentalism and natural resources all going together while we have commerce and trade and tourism together. But right now, I rise in support of this because I think this is an important step forward. I look forward to hearing the council president explain exactly why some of these committees have been structured the way they are. I think that's a very important thing for the public to hear, and I think that this debate that we're having is also a very important airing of these changes. Sometimes these things can go through and nobody gets to discuss them properly, but I think that we are doing that today. And what you're seeing in conclusion is a council that is creating an identity for itself. We are saying that we are a council that together wants to reach out to communities and to the youth of this city. We will take on investment, we will take on schools, we will take on economic development, and we will bring City Hall closer to the people. Because after all, Channel 35 can only do so much. So I think this is the beginning of that, and I look forward to us continuing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, I appreciate the discussion that has taken place. First of all, let me say, we're afforded this opportunity because of the new charter. The new charter, as was referenced in the resolution, allows the council to organize committees to be able to take care of business as we deem appropriate. And I especially want to recognize the members of the council who are past charter reform commissioners, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine, because they were part of bringing the opportunity to us. After the vote on council leadership earlier this month, the questions immediately became, you know, who's going to sit on what committee and who's going to chair what committee. And so the process that we had the privilege of engaging in is one of, well, before we look at committee assignments, does the committee structure itself warrant some change? And so, colleagues, the process that was followed was many, many conversations, one-on-one conversations that I had with each and every one of you and conversations that I know you had with each other. Some, if not many, of those conversations that led to suggestions and led to recommendations are reflected in the proposed committee structure. And there was many other ideas, some very, very bold ideas, but I think it is in part strategic that we have embraced and I have proposed a few of the changes to reflect the priorities, like neighborhoods and schools and like housing and others, which I'll elaborate on in a minute. Not to say that other ideas were bad ideas, because they weren't, there were many good ideas, but to keep us focused. Because one of the things that is somewhat of a pitfall for us as public servants is sometimes we try to do way too much and we spread ourselves and our staff way too thin, not for a lack of needs and challenges in the city of Los Angeles, but to be effective, we need to focus, we need to be specific. And so I chose to prioritize a few of the changes that are reflected in the structure. Mr. Burnson, a question you had about building and safety, I think in part was answered by Ms. Misakowski, saying there is several components of building and safety that stays within planning, others that have sort of been reassigned out of public safety but towards the new housing committee, because the housing committee should not just focus on new housing construction, both market rate and affordable, but take a serious look at the quality of the existing housing stock, when just less than a year ago, we had a tragedy in Echo Park as a recent vivid example. But the creation of the housing committee was significant. We had an excellent debate, colleagues, a couple of weeks ago about the neighborhood or the Housing Trust Fund and what a giant step that will be for us to take as a city, to have a committee focused on just that, not only on that fund, but affordable housing, housing in general, the quality of housing, et cetera, and building and safety paying a part of that was important. Neighborhoods and schools. Mr. Holden, you raise great concern that we've heard before about, you know, what the heck is the city council or the city officials doing when it comes to education? Because it's not our jurisdiction, it's not our direct authority. But I believe we have a responsibility to engage in a supportive role when it comes to schools and education, because the future of our city relies on it, the future of our tax base, so that we can continue to fill potholes and fix sidewalks, et cetera, relies on that. Mr. Ridley-Thomas, I know you're anti, but I'm responding to questions that were addressed to me.
If you're going to speak to the issue, Mr. President, may I suggest that the rules be observed and you afford yourself the freedom to do so by taking full advantage of the mic and someone else might chair in your stead.
I appreciate that, and normally, we do recognize that amendment rule. I do believe, however, that the reconfiguration of the council committees warrants the discussion and I'm —
Agreed. No debate on that.
And I'm going to take the liberty to address the questions
And you should.
— from this position. The addition of an audits function
Mr. President.
— into the governmental efficiency.
I'll be recognized when you choose to.
Yes. The addition of the audits function to the governmental efficiency committee, I think, makes all the sense in the world. The new charter, once again, allows for — or calls for the controller to conduct periodic audits, once every three years for each department. We have provided for a venue for those audits and the results of those audits to be considered and possibly acted upon by the council. And finally, Mr. Holden, another one of your questions was intergovernmental relations. Again, looking at the new charter as our city's constitution, it gives a little bit more authority and a role for the mayor to play as our representative officially in Sacramento and in Washington, although we know that each one of us is a champion of issues, a champion of our districts, and plays a role in Washington and Sacramento as well. But given that, given the desire to focus and elevate our priority of neighborhoods and schools, I felt it appropriate to consolidate intergovernmental relations into the Rules and Elections Committee and allow the members of that committee, particularly the chair, to work hand-in-hand with the mayor on the broader policy stance of the city. So that is the logic of a lot of the changes behind the proposed structure. I appreciate your questions and input. Colleagues, just as a side note to conclude, and then we'll continue recognizing members, after the structure is finalized, hopefully it's finalized today, then I would look to soon thereafter move forward with the actual committee assignment so we can all get to work. Soon thereafter, reinstate some of the ad-hocs that are doing work as we speak and possibly introduce some new ad-hoc committees as well over time in both the short term and the longer term, as is deemed appropriate. So with that, we'll continue with council members speaking. Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
I was going to request that a presentation of and the rationale for the committees be afforded, and that is at least in part been done. I will use the balance of my time at another point in time, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wax.
I love listening to this discussion. In two years, this council is really going to be good.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas for a second time? That clears the speaker queue. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have not only the resolution before us, but at least one amendment that I heard from Ms. Hahn
Yes, you do.
— is to rename the neighborhood and schools as education and neighborhoods. Education and neighborhoods or neighborhoods and education? Colleagues, there's an amending motion before us. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That amendment is adopted. Clerk, please open the roll on the resolution as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is adopted. Thank you, colleagues. Fourth with on a resolution? Okay. Ms. Galant requests fourth with, and I appreciate your comments earlier, really do. Next item, please.
Item number twelve called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have staff here on this at all? Thank you.
I'm Gretchen Hardison with the Environmental Affairs Department.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I rise in support of this, but would like to ask a couple of questions. This essentially authorizes, colleagues, the Environmental Affairs Department to prepare and submit applications for grant funding for a variety of air pollution programs. And this takes place under the Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Review Committee, an independent agency operating with AQMD. Now, a couple of questions which you may or may not be able to answer that have to do with our own environmental quality, our fleet vehicles in particular. I know that we can apply through these grants for alternative fuel vehicles.
Yes.
Right now, the way that rules are constructed, we can only purchase fleet vehicles. We cannot lease them. I think we've done a good job with natural gas vehicles in doing that, but as a driver of electric vehicles, which some have mothballed, but I still think are a viable form of transportation. And if anybody's environmentally conscious, at least these cars still exist after the leases, and we don't want them just to be sitting around. Have we looked at all about whether these grants will allow us to continue to lease environmental vehicles, just because that's simply the only way that we can get those vehicles right now? And secondly, have we looked at that rule internally? I know that we've leased that in the past through
I know that we've leased that in the pass-through Environmental Affairs Department, but that some of this is done through General Services as well, so I was wondering if you could speak to that.
Councilmember Garcetti, please have city staff sit at the center table.
Sure. Come on, pass the rope. Our bouncer has let you through. So specifically, would we be able to continue to lease electric vehicles first through this program?
These particular grants through the MSRC at this point in time will make a buy-down incentive available through, actually, the California Energy Commission. I'm sorry. These particular grant opportunities at the moment will make a purchase incentive available through the California Energy Commission for, actually, gasoline hybrids, gasoline-electric hybrids, and a few other natural gas, SUELEV categorized vehicles. At this point in time, the MSRC is not offering an electric vehicle buy-down. Are you aware of any other opportunities? There's this...
Hello? Lisa Wonder? Oh, Lisa Wonder with the Environmental Affairs Department. Currently, the California Energy Commission has a $9,000 rebate for electric vehicles available over a three-year period, $3,000 per year, and I believe that's available on either the purchase or lease of an electric vehicle.
So we could use that?
We could use that, through state legislation.
For General Services, just to note, if we could authorize a study to see whether or not it's possible, right now, leases of electric vehicles can cost anywhere from about, for a three-year lease, $10,000 to $18,000. If up to half of that is refunded now through incentives with the state of about $9,000, certainly, some of the fleet vehicles that we buy, we lose that much in terms of three years of maintenance and their market value. So if it's possible to change those rules so that General Services was still able to lease electric vehicles, every single one of these that we put on the road does something wonderful for the air in terms of zero emissions, so I'd like to add that friendly amendment to this.
Mr. Burton.
Is this, I'd like to ask, is this grant coming through the state or through AQMD or what?
This is the Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Review Committee, the MSRC that is housed at the AQMD, it's independent from...
Is this the Moir funds?
No, this is separate from the Moir funds.
This is separate from the Moir funds? Okay, and what amount are we applying for?
We're organizing a meeting of the Interagency Alternative Fuels Task Force.
I can barely understand.
We're organizing a meeting of the Interagency Alternative Fuels Task Force, which is an internal task force for next Thursday, where all the departments are going to come together, and we're going to assess what the need is from the each individual department.
What are we going to do with the money? What I want to know is, what are we going to do with this grant money? Is this for dealing with some of the things that have been invoked on AQMD, such as the fleet rules on doing away with our diesel uses, or anything to do with the particular traps on the diesel vehicles that we use, or what?
Actually, both, sir. This opportunity, the MSRC is releasing several different requests for proposals, one of which we'll look at on and off-road heavy-duty vehicles, at which we are considering, and we'll work with the sanitation department to look at, the diesel pilot LNG sanitation trucks. But there is a separate RFP for particulate traps that we will also be looking into, and...
Well, these are being done separately. The Air District is doing some of that in conjunction already, and I just wonder, you know, the big problem with the heavy-duty type equipment is that the gas-type vehicles, the liquid gas LNG vehicles, in many cases, may not be able to cover certain types of areas where there are hilly areas and so forth. So I just wonder, is this duplication or what?
I think we will be working closely with the other departments who are looking at purchasing vehicles, so that we don't duplicate efforts, but that we can sort of consolidate them and bring the efforts together, so that we can purchase a greater number of vehicles with the funds that are available from the different sources.
Okay. I'm going to support it, but I will tell you that I'm going to look at it carefully when it comes before the AQMD.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen aye.
Item twelve is approved, again. Next item, please.
Item number fourteen called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti, item fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have staff for this as well? Maybe the CAO, is he here? I guess not. Oh, there he is. Colleagues, I understand that this is somewhat of an administrative motion, an important one, in terms of looking at personnel, and that we look at certain positions that are approved by ordinance and some by resolution. And I understand that the ones that have been, the ones that are done by resolution are supposed to be for specific projects that have a finite amount of time. And I understand that every year in the budget process, the ones that have been hanging out as resolution ones for a decade or 12 years get cleared off, and I'm glad to hear that. I just wanted to ask one simple question about whether or not the ones that are more medium-term, you know, things that every year, we keep doing this for five, for six years, if there's any way that we can actually have these done by ordinance in the way that it's designed to be. I understand that things change during the year, projects get extended, et cetera, so we don't always know, and certainly, year-to-year, that will happen. But some of these, which I understand have sometimes been extended for up to 10 years, whether we can do something internally to do that a little better?
It was a past practice of, during the budget process, to keep a number of positions, and I think an unreasonable number, on resolution authority. This past year, 50 to 60 percent of them were moved to regular authorities or eliminated if the program ended. It's our intent in the next budget process to aggressively pursue this issue. This is something we think should be a standard and a crucial step in the budget process to ensure we don't keep things on resolution authority for an inordinate period of time. So it will be.
Sure. And I hope you don't find it too much of a nitpicking question. I think it's just an important one in terms of, as we plan forward with budgeting, you know, it's a very important process to, as much as possible, not get lazy about the thinking ahead of where these positions are going to be, especially at a time that budgets may be tightening. So it's just for that that I praise those increasingly aggressive efforts and support them very much.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak on item fourteen? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen aye.
Item fourteen is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number sixteen is a closed-session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk and take public comment?
Let's hold it on the desk.
Then public comment is next.
Public comment, period, colleagues. This is the point in time of the agenda where we hear from members of the public on items within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward Mr. Larry Green, to be followed by Mr. Michael Sainte-Hil.
Good morning. I actually was not going to come to this meeting this morning. It's a very busy time of the year for people in my category, but I had to come here because I read this morning's Daily News. I don't know if Ron Deaton is here right now, but I read the editorial, which was most unfair, attacking Ron Deaton in last week's Daily News. Ron Deaton is a great civil servant, and without Ron Deaton, you probably would have a very hard time going home at 5:00 in the afternoon, you'd be spending all day reading laws. So I first want to say that I'm behind Ron Deaton, and I didn't like the little low-blow. But let me tell you about last night, and I know this is within this, this is an item not on the agenda, but affects city business. I went, can I have your attention, please? This is going to be good, you don't want to miss this. I went to a forum last night in North Hollywood, right near the Red Line, and I spoke. Well, there were nine of the 10 candidates there from the 4th District. Beth Garfield couldn't make it for some reason. Today's Daily News discusses all eight of the other candidates, discusses their opinions on the LAPD, their opinions on crime, their opinions on mass transit, and this is what they say about me. First of all, I'm not Melrose, I'm Larry Green. Larry Green, who ran for mayor in March, also qualified for the special election. Well, I don't have enough time to talk about how they mentioned Roberti's stance on LAPD and Labonge's stance on community neighborhood councils, but Larry Green, he just qualified. Well, let me tell you something, LA Daily News, you're the same ones that slammed Ron Deaton for no reason, and we just can't let the media ignore this election in the 4th District and fill the 14th seat. And I'm mad as hell, and I'm not going to take it anymore. This is not a joke. You all campaigned hard to get in there, and if I can't talk to the city council about this issue, I ask for a little bit more equity and respect from the media. That being said, I'm wrapping up. Don't worry, councilman, I'm wrapping up. I know we have somebody else talking. President, I'm sorry, President. We need to crack down on jaywalking. We need to fix my street. How many times have I told you that my street, Las Palmas, is like a crater on the moon? Now, why don't you exercise authority to pave Las Palmas, the way you've paved other streets in the valley? We don't want to secede. Las Palmas wants to stay in the city of LA, but my street is a mess. Take 800 blocks of Las Palmas, take a ride sometime. The last thing I want to say, you're the city council, I got your ears right now. We need to get traffic enforcement. Dennis, I met you when you were on a gosh darn motorcycle. We need to have more LAPD on motorcycles on Rossmore, on Gower, on Beverly. People are going 60, 65 miles an hour in SUVs over speed bumps. We need more cops with radar guns, and we need them now, before someone is killed. That's all I want to say. I've already been killed by the Daily News. I'm done for right now. Okay, President, was I okay?
That is fine.
And I want to welcome all my other candidates. Pop in at these meetings once in a while. You want to be in city council, pop in, find out what it's all like. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Mr. Michael Sainte-Hil.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael H. Sainte-Hil. I hope you believe in freedom of speech, because I strongly believe in freedom of speech. I hope you believe in listening to the big, the small, and the little, because I call myself the little. I do believe, when you visit cities across America, you find that you see what, you look around and you can see the beauty of the city, and you probably can contribute it to good city leaders. I look around in LA, and you see all the downtown area, you see all the drug activity, all the toilets on the streets, and dirty streets, and drug activity, and all kinds of crime. You think that some of the city leaders don't really care. You have a corporation such as SRR Corporation that I can tell you, I don't speak without actual knowledge, is totally corrupt, totally. You might listen and hear some of the leaders on the board of directors of SRR says how great it is, and it's not. And you see all the, they're not here to help LA, I don't believe, for all the things they are involved in, because you have 90 percent of SRR employees dealing drugs on the street, and you can contribute 20 to 30 percent of the drug activity, legal drug activity in the LA area to SRR Corporation. I think the city council, the mayor, should look at SRR Corporation, because it's not a good company. You have the post office downtown on Spring Street, who you can, you can common, you can send, if you're a good drug dealer, wholesale, you can send drugs through that post office, and it will get through to the drug dealers on the street. You have the green-shirt security officers who are definitely involved in the drug activity downtown, and I don't see why, I asked the police station on Central, why these security guards are riding sidewalk on the street. They're not employed by the city. I can't understand why these security are allowed to deal drugs. And again, we don't, on the first glass issue, preceding me, you don't need, we don't need any more police officers, and we don't need any more laws in America. Thank you very much, Michael H. I also want to submit this letter to the city council, mayor.
Yes, that'll be picked up. Thank you very much for your comments. This concludes public comment for today. Next item.
Item number 16 is a closed-session item. Did you wish to clear the desk at this time?
Let's clear the desk.
Motions for posting and referral?
Those motions are posted and referred.
Councilmembers request to be excused from council attendance. Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on Wednesday, August 1st, to leave at 12:45. This meets policy.
Mr. Pacheco is excused.
And Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused on Tuesday, October 2nd, to leave at 11:30. This also meets policy.
Mr. Weiss is excused.
The desk is clear, so for item 16.
Item 16 is a closed-session item, in conformance with California code, the council will adjourn to closed session. Clerk, excuse me, guards, please clear the chambers. We're back in open session. Clerk, what is now before us?
Item number 16, a motion by Councilmember Miskowski, continue that matter till August 3rd.
Without objection, that item is continued.
The desk is clear.
Colleagues, any adjourning motions? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Burton, for the cookies. Colleagues, you may have read in the paper this morning about two tragic shootings yesterday. I rise in memory, first, of Julia Madden, who lived in the 13th District. She was a Sunday school teacher, was killed by a bullet that was intended for a 15-year-old boy who was hiding in her yard yesterday. The bullet entered a window and passed through a bathroom wall, striking her in the head and exiting her right eye, and she died within hours at the Los Angeles County USC Medical Center, and is survived by her husband, Dexter Madden. About a half hour before that, in the 14th District, I believe, Ruben Argumedo was killed as he stood the southwest corner of North Avenue 64 and Garvanza Avenue in Highland Park. This was the same intersection where his 26-year-old brother, Alexander, was gunned down in November 1990, and he's survived by his mother, Margarita Argumedo, his wife, and his daughter.
Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, I ask that...
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we today pay tribute to and remember Mary Lamb, who was the mother of Bill Lamb, a longtime accountant in the controller's office who passed away over the weekend at age 87. She was married for over 50 years to Edward Lamb, has three children, Bill, Kathy, and Carol, five grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. She will be very much missed, and I'd like to send our condolences to Bill Lamb and his entire family.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, would you join me in adjourning in memory of Robert Streeter Jr.? Mr. Streeter was a longtime resident of Los Angeles, has a very extraordinary career as a carpenter, but as a lover of jazz and blues, and made his mark as an entrepreneur in those respective venues. He is the uncle of Dr. Oscar Streeter, who is one of the persons who has distinguished himself as a leading oncologist in our city at the Norris Center. His uncle, Robert, affectionately known as Bob, will be missed by a host of family and
Mr. Wax.
Yes, I'd like the council to join in memory of Pauline Forch, who was the wife of Jack Forch and the mother of Gary Forch and Glenn Forch, together. For many generations, they've been a very prominent family in the Northeast Valley and Sun Valley, business people within the community and political circles, and she will be sorely missed, and I'll give the clerk the pertinent information.
Any others? Mr. Wax, I'd actually like to join you on that one. Both Glenn and Gary are owners and operators of Rosco Hardware in Sun Valley and members of the Chamber of Commerce there, but Pauline was very active in the Boy Scouts, and especially...